Okay, council is seven o'clock and I officially call the meeting to order. Will everyone please stand for the pledge of allegiance? Thank you. We have Ms. Patel with us today, helping out in Ms. Martinez's place. So we're going to go through this, through the agenda. The first item we have on the agenda is roll call. Okay, Ms. Patel, and we remember we have one council member on Zoom.
This is Counselor Daniel, I'm in, I'm here. And do you, will you call on me every time I need to just announce my vote?
Yes.
Counselors, all counselors present? And the quorum has been declared.
All right, thank you, thank you. All right, that brings us to the next item on the agenda is the agenda approval. Counselor Krebs?
I motion to approve.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Not, please start voting.
Counselor Daniel?
I vote yes.
The motion carried unanimously.
Okay, thank you. Okay, that brings us to the next item on the agenda is the citizen comment. This is the portion of the agenda to where we ask those who have already filled out their comment cards to come up to the podium. And at that time, you have three minutes to make any comments that you would like. We will be timing the time that you're up there. We do ask that you end your comments at the three minute mark. If you are still talking at that time, I will politely ask you to end so other people will have opportunities to come up and speak. I only have one comment card and then after this comment card, I'll go to Zoom to see if we have anyone on Zoom who would like to make any comments. Don Thompson?
Yes, my name is Don Thompson. I live at nine twenty-four Eighth Street in beautiful Alamosa. A few months ago, I came and complained about noisy vehicles. And I was pleased to see Alamosa Citizen have an article just a couple of weeks ago saying that you were going to be looking at that. There is an instrument that decibel reader connected with a camera. And much like a red light camera, it will be activated by a vehicle that is exceeding the noise ordinance. Take a picture of the license plate of that vehicle. This saves the police having to get involved. I have the feeling that a couple of citations word would get around and Alamosa would be a much more quietable and livable location. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we're now going to go to the Zoom participants to see if there's anyone on Zoom who would like to make any comments. Ms. Patel, is there any way you can give them instructions? If you don't know the instructions, I don't mind sharing it with them on how to raise your hand.
If you're on the Zoom app and you'd like to speak for audience comment, you can use the raise your hand feature in the bottom of your screen.
Okay, I don't see anyone with their hand raised. So we'll go ahead and close this segment of the agenda under citizen comment and then just turn it back over to staff for any further comments at this time.
Um, I just want to thank Dawn for the information. And he's right on that this isn't an issue that we can solve with police alone. It is going to take some of our community members to help report it, get a picture of the license plate, all of that. And so it's in response to the concerns we've been hearing from the community. So I just want to confirm that.
Okay, thank you. Counsel, that brings us to consent calendar A. Counselor V Hill?
Mayor, I move that we approve consent calendar A.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, if not, please start voting.
Counselor Daniel?
Yes.
The motion moves forward unanimously.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Patel. That brings us to the next item on the agenda. Under regular business, we have presentations from outside agencies. The first one is the annual update from outside funding partner, Alamosa County Veterans. If we have a representative in the audience today, if you can come up to the microphone, we sure would appreciate it.
Good evening and thank you for having us. My name is Ronnie Wisdom and I am the county administrator for Alamosa County. And I'm here to visit with you today with regard to the Alamosa County Veterans Transportation and Emergency Service Program. And I brought with me Mike Lopez, who is our coordinator for the transportation program.
Hello.
So the Alamosa County has a veterans program that provides transportation to the six counties of the San Luis Valley. We recently created an MOU with Warfino County so that we can help transfer the residents or the veterans from Warfino County as we drive through. And just kind of give you a background on the veterans population. We have approximately 2,900 veterans in the San Luis Valley, according to the information that I've received. What's interesting is that's from September of 2021. In our 2020, in our 2019 report, we've lost 167 veterans. So I'm not sure exactly, but a lot of our veterans are getting older. Fifty-five percent of them are older than age sixty-four. So you can imagine that the ability to get to and from medical appointments is absolutely critical for the folks in the San Luis Valley, for our veterans. We have, we have approximately five drivers, five to six drivers. These are all volunteers. They're paid by a stipend, which we really appreciate. They're, and they are so dedicated, they're wonderful. We have five vehicles. We have one from the department or DAV, Disabled American Veterans. And I want to thank Mike Lopez personally because he was instrumental in getting that for us. So we're absolutely excited about that one. We just recently acquired a wheelchair accessible van, which we have not had and not been able to take veterans that were in wheelchairs. We have two other, three other cars that Alamosa County has provided and one other veterans, a veterans vehicle that we use. So we, we see approximately 250 veterans a year. We transport them. There's about 720 or so transportations that we do every single, about between 50 and 65 a month. We go anywhere from Durango or we've gone to Pagosa. We've gone to Cheyenne and, or not Cheyenne, but Chapee County up in that area, Solita and over there, Canyon City, Denver, Colorado Springs, Pueblo, and of course, a lot of them in Alamosa. For a lot of folks who are on dialysis or have to have wound management care, were their ability to get around to get those taken care of. So we fund this program through a grant through the Department of Military Affairs. And they usually fund us to the tune of about $55,000. Only 35,000 of that goes for the veterans program. Yet we travel about 117,000 miles a year. So Alamosa County has been gracious and have worked really hard to make sure that this program is funded and your help makes it possible. We really do appreciate that you guys are willing to be partners with us in this program. So I, Mike?
Uh, yeah, and like Ronnie was saying, the amount of veterans that we transport is increasing, you know, all the time. I mean, there's, there's veterans out there in the surrounding areas that don't have access to, you know, even a phone, actually. So those people are finding out about us, word of mouth from the other, you know, general population there. So it's increasing quite rapidly, actually. So from the 50 or so a month, I'm, I was counting our schedule for this month. It's pretty close to seventy-eight, seventy-nine that we're going to do, uh, you know, before the end of the month. They've scheduled way ahead too, so.
The program has grown sufficiently that we have to have a part-time coordinator because just to keep track of all of them and keep our drivers. And it's been difficult the past few months just because of the weather. As you can imagine, we don't want to send our drivers out or our veterans in dangerous and inclement situations. So, but your commitment and your assistance with this program is huge and we really do appreciate that.
Okay, if you're, if you're done, I'll open up the mics for council comments, okay? All right, we'll start off with Counselor Regal.
Okay, thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
I just want to thank the county for, for what they do for veterans because like you said, like there's a lot of veterans out there that can't go to these all, these different appointments and stuff. And right now, it's coming to a point where, and there's this program called TRICARE where they're, they're sending you to different areas. And if you can't get there, you know, without the vans and stuff, it's, it's, it's really bad, it's really hard on veterans. So I really appreciate what you, what you guys are doing for. Do we still have a service officer, veterans officer?
Yes, we do. Bill Brown is our veteran service officer. We absolutely, and he's part of this program too. And I wanted to mention that he's been with us for a little over a year now and he's really working on the other side of it with our veterans and our mental health concerns. We have looked at a way that we can kind of, I want to say short circuit, but that's what it is, short circuit, the, the time that it takes for us to get a veteran to see a counselor who possibly, you know, if you have PTSD, you need to see somebody now, not in four weeks. He's done a really amazing job with bringing some counselors on that we can get in right away that can be BA approved. In fact, our last grant, the one that we just wrote is for 100,000 and a, and a significant portion of that, we're trying to get into the mental health side of it so we can help our veterans in that way. So he handles the emergency side, making sure they're getting the right veteran or veterans benefits. We don't do a lot of housing because we let the VOA and some of those other programs, we try very hard not to duplicate programs. We, you know, we talk to each other a lot with the different programs. So yes, he's still there and he's doing a great job too.
Again, thank you so much for what you do for our veterans.
Counselor Carson?
Uh, I just want to reiterate what Counselor Regal said. Thank you, guys. I, I talked to several people, you know, well, all the time, even recently. But everybody that goes your way is pleased, they're pleased with the assistance they get. And so thank you, guys. Again, talking about the TRICARE situation, a lot of these people really having a hard time getting there and you guys have filled that gap in more ways than one. So thank you very much, appreciate it.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Carson. Okay, I don't see any more lights on or I don't see any hands raised. So I'll just wrap things up. County Administrator Wisdom and also Mr. Lopez, thank you so very much for the presentation. Very helpful information. I, I was really surprised to see we have 55% of the 2,900 veterans are over the age of 84. Wow, well, thank you because those people are in much need of your services. We appreciate everything you do.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you for having us.
Oh, you're welcome. Okay, that brings us to the next item on our agenda on the, under the presentations from outside agencies, an update from Trinidad State College.
And Mayor, in addition to Jim, we do have Dr. Epper, who is joining us through Zoom. And I believe she sent a PowerPoint for us to share.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can, Dr. Epper.
Okay. Oh, I'm so glad you have the PowerPoint, thank you. Hold on one second. Okay, once again, good evening, Mayor Coleman and council members. It is a pleasure to be with you this evening and I apologize for not being there in person. I'm kind of planning my visit to the valley this week around the approaching winter storm. And so I've shifted my trip to Friday so I can attend our nurse pinning ceremony, which is going to be on Saturday. But I'm also very glad to be joined by our Vice President Jim Kiner, who's going to be sharing in a few minutes, an update on our construction program. But primarily what I wanted to do tonight was to share with you some of our capital improvement plans for the Alamosa campus, which we're pretty excited about. And the slides that you see here are an excerpt from what I presented to the Legislative Capital Development Committee last December. And overall, I guess I just would like to let you know that this capital improvement plan represents a significant opportunity to increase workforce training for high demand jobs in the San Luis Valley as well as for Trinidad State to create a safe and effective learning environment for our students. So on this slide, this just kind of summarizes a bit of background on the valley campus. You're probably familiar with some of this. But we serve about five to 600 students on our valley campus each semester. That does include concurrent enrollment students. So some of those students are taking classes in the high schools. Some of our signature programs include nursing, which we offer all the way from certified nurse aide through LPN to RN and all the way to BSN. We have medical assisting, we have dental assisting, EMS, paramedic, the law enforcement academy, teacher preparation, welding, construction trades, and automotive, as well as adult basic ed and GED. We train the majority of healthcare workers, law enforcement officers, and first responders in the valley. We're also really proud of our nursing program. They have very high pass rates on the NCLEX. One of the reasons that we're having nurse pinning on Saturday is because our nursing faculty have been preparing our students to take the NCLEX before April 1st, which is when the NCLEX is undergoing a major change. So they wanted them to finish early and take the test under the old testing model. So they're working all the way through Christmas break so that they could finish the semester early. They really work hard to prepare students to do well on the NCLEX. Next slide, please. Yes, so all of, all of that success is achieved. What we do in the valley in spite of less than ideal learning conditions in our facilities. So our valley campus is made up of two buildings. We have the main building, which was built in 1936. And it was originally an elementary school. And then we have the Allied Health Building, which was built in 1965 and was previously a mental health clinic. And it was purchased in 2002 by the Trinidad State College Foundation. That building is in, is not in good shape. It's in, it's in really poor condition. And in fact, it was recommended from our architects, who helped us with our master facilities plan, was recommended for demolition. But before that happens and through this capital improvement project, our allied health programs will be relocated into an expanded main building. Next, so the major issues that we're hoping to address through our capital improvement project is the condition and performance of the HVAC systems, the boilers, controls, there is no air conditioning in the building. So it gets really uncomfortable, especially in the summertime. The age of the roof, non-accessible, accessible restrooms, electrical service, single pane windows. The list goes on and on, lack of a fire sprinkler in the majority of the building. There's really no clear entrance to the building. I'm not sure if you've ever come to our campus, but it's kind of hard to know where to enter the building. And that has, that raises security concerns as well. There's really not a study space or any student gathering spaces in the building. And then, of course, as I mentioned, the Allied Health Building overall is in really poor condition. So just to, to give you an idea of what you're looking at, on the left photo, you'll see the footprint of our campus, which includes the main building and that occupies a full city block. And then the Allied Health Building, which is across the street. What we're proposing to do is expand the main building by adding an addition where you see indicated, kind of in what's currently the courtyard area, that will be enclosed to create a one-stop student services area. And then, once that happens, that will create more space in the main building and we will move the allied health programs into the renovated main building, where they will occupy space on both floors of the north wing. The kind of where the science labs are on the north side of the building. And eventually, the allied health building will be demolished and that will be converted into a parking lot, according to the recommendations from our master facility plan. On the right-hand side of the page, you see a photo looking down the hallway of the main building. And you can see that it looks very much like an elementary school, right? It's a long hallway with classrooms on each side. Again, there's really no main entrance to the building or welcome area. And when students come into the building, it's, they don't really know where they're supposed to go to find help and where to register and so forth. Let's see. You can advance to the next slide. So in, in, in the health, the allied health building, it has, it just has a lot of problems, the poorly performing HVAC, an aging flat metal roof, wood shake perimeter, single pane windows. The floor is not commercial grade, has low ceilings. It has an aging plumbing system and it has a failing septic system. So several times a semester, the septic system fails and we have to close the restrooms and students have to go across the street into the main building to use the restrooms. The roof is leaking in places and that creates problems because we have a lot of expensive equipment in there, the nurse simulators. Those are like $50,000 simulation machines. And the faculty, whenever it snows, they gather up all the equipment and move it to the middle of the room so it doesn't get wet. And they have space heaters. And it's really, you know, it doesn't present the quality of our program the way we want to present to our students and our prospective students. We do amazing work in this little building and, and produce some really great nurses as well as emergency medical staff. So I want, I want you to know that it's, in spite of the condition of the building, we have really great quality programs. The next slide. And so in summary, this is, this is what we've proposed to the legislature, a two-story addition enclosing that courtyard area to create a one-stop student services area and a main building entrance. Will allow our allied health programs to move into the main building. We'll have a study lounge for students. There'll be some new office space as things are getting moved around. There'll be an assembly space where we'll be able to have nurse pinning within our own facility. Currently, we use usually a local church. I think on Saturday, our pinning is at the Living Water Church. And perhaps some graduations, smaller graduations, we can have in the assembly space as well as some class lectures. And then addressing the HVAC and electrical service for the, for the building. The project costs that we've proposed are, is a two-phase project. Phase one would be 5.7 million and phase two 11.6 million. This project was not recommended by the CDC this year. As you know, it's a, it's a, it's a competitive process and all the universities and colleges throughout the state propose their highest priority capital projects and they get ranked. Ours get ranked by our community college system. Our project was number three this year, which is pretty high. And then it gets ranked by CDHE before it goes to the Capital Development Committee. I think we ended up number 24 on the list and they recommended the first 18 projects for funding this year. Of course, those haven't all been funded. The JBC will ultimately decide which projects get funded. But we're hopeful that next year, our project will be considered because we, we really want to be able to have a safe learning environment for our students and a high-quality building that will enable us to attract more students to our outstanding programs.
But thank you very much, Dr. Eckhart. We, we've approached our 10-minute allotment of time. So if you don't mind, I'll pass it over to Jim and let him wrap things up.
Yeah.
That's okay?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Sure, I, I, and thank you, counsel and Mr. Mayor. I will go off script and speak very quickly here in the interest of time. I had the opportunity to attend the Chamber of Commerce luncheon today where Heather spoke very eloquently and passionately. And, and Mr. Mayor, you said intelligently about the issue of homelessness here in the valley, here in Alamosa. It's scary. But as she started putting up some of those slides showing AMI and the fact that even our teachers, our policemen, those who earn a decent living here in Alamosa in the valley can't afford a house, that's even more concerning. And so this is not just a homelessness problem, this is an affordable housing problem and a problem for the fact that those who are gainfully employed here and raising families can't afford a house, which is dangerous to this organism, to this, to this area. So it's really all our problems. And to that extent, Trinidad State wants to contribute to the solution. Now, we can't resolve it all by ourselves, but through the, the copper grant, which is the Colorado Partnership for Education and Rural Revitalization under the auspices of the Attorney General, about 1.87 million dollars is coming to the valley, to the campus, Trinidad State Campus, to allow us to purchase dilapidated homes, homes needing, you know, a lot of tender loving care, refurbish those homes and sell them back into the community as affordable housing. So that's our, our part, our, our small part, but certainly very important part in, in addressing the problem that you so eloquently and passionately spoke about. Where it's, there's been some delay, truthfully, procedurally and, and just through contracts and so forth. But we've hired an instructor. His name is Pat Martinez and he's well-known in the valley as a, as a great builder. He has some experience with the college as well. He's purchasing the necessary equipment and supplies and tools. And right now, we're, we're working on purchasing a home in Montevista. We have an opportunity to purchase two homes over the course of the next year. Ideally, we wanted our first home in Alamosa, but again, the dearth of housing precludes that from happening. So we'll take the first home, the one that we can get, start that project, get the traction moving and then hopefully find a home here in Alamosa as well. And again, an important project, an opportunity to train in a high-demand industry and more importantly, to bring back to the community opportunities for our citizens to be able to purchase a home that they can afford.
Okay, well, thank you. I'm going to open up the mic for council for comments. Or if you like to make any comments, please turn your light on or raise your hand. Counselor Daniel, I see Counselor Daniel has her hand raised. Go ahead, Counselor Dan.
Thank you, Mayor. And I just wanted to say thank you, President Epper and team. Like this was an amazing presentation. I am sorry that the, a request was not funded. And I do, like, those are tough, this, this is just a tough, it's a tough process. I also just wanted to say I really appreciate all the work that you have been doing in the Opportunity Now project and coming together with all of the partners in the San Luis Valley as we put into that proposal to build that workforce and to help with some of those things. And so it's just been really impressive to see all of the things Trinidad State is doing. And I just really appreciate that and wanted to say thank you for your presentation and we will send good vibes. And we will send good vibes to you next year when you resubmit for the funding and hopefully get it.
Thank you, Counselor Daniel.
Counselor Hensley?
I also want to thank you for everything you're doing. I, I think it's really awesome, the idea of focusing in on the trades especially. Those are well-paying jobs and there's a real shortage. And I, I, I think that as more people realize that that need is there and that it's a very consistent and a job that a career, people will be able to keep for a long, long time. So I think it's awesome that you're doing that. And then giving back with having them work on houses and things like that. That is something that you can sell back as a portable housing. So thank you very much.
I, I want to wrap things up and thank you all for the community's support that you all often do. And I see at all the different events, that means a lot. I'm really excited about the construction project. In fact, our team at CRHDC will be reaching out to Pat Martinez because we are going to be looking for an intern. And we specifically talked about your, your program to, to make sure that we're able to bring that intern in so that they can learn some of the construction skills. So thank you so very much and we appreciate the presentation.
Thank you.
You're welcome. That brings us to the next item on the agenda. Business brought forward by city staff, development services, quarterly update on housing and downtown plan.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of council. So this is my quarterly justification for the existence of my department. Just kidding. You love, you love us. So I last presented to you on January 3rd, I believe, early January. And it's, it's a little slow in the winter months for my department, but we still have managed to do a fair amount of things. So the format's the same as all of my previous presentations. So our projects, um, the project for the downtown parking lots, the Four Street parking lot, the one that's behind the old JCPenney's went out to bid on December 5th. All the bids came in about mid-January. We were able to select contractors. We came in about 25% under what the costs were anticipated to be when we applied for the grant funds, which is great because our money can go a little bit further. And so all the contractors are on board and we've been working closely with Public Works that are wholly much better at project management, getting our construction schedule set up. And so, um, the grubbing and initial work for the Four Street parking lot should be on April 3rd. We also went before council and we had the IGA adopted for our Avenue Cultural Trail, which means that now we've kicked off regular meetings with CDOT. We're meeting with them bi-weekly. It's a really nice way to keep that project moving forward. And we're almost at the point where we can put the design services out to bid. Um, and then finally, um, I, I, I don't think council's seen this project, but this was a partnership with Visit Alamosa. They helped pay for the wayfinding signs for downtown that are going installed, being installed this spring. But they also ordered and designed their own kiosks. And so we've been helping them design maps and work on getting all of this stuff so that it can be installed at the same time. And it's the same aesthetic and the same colors as our, from our downtown plan. So it's a great partnership there. Oh, sorry, probably should have said that. Thank you. Um, funding. Yada in my office is just, you know, convinced she's going to get funding to fix the bellhagen clock. I thought it might be nice for council to see what the bellhagen clock looks like right now. So it's out in one of our shops and what it used to look like, um, back in days of yore. It's the one right beneath the, the drugstore sign. So if you think about how tall an awning on a businesses and the drugstore sign and how big that clock is, it's a really big, beautiful clock and we were really interested in getting it fixed. And so we had community members help us put together estimates and a lot of the, um, a lot of the services to fix the clock were donated in kind. And so there was just about nine, a little over $9,000 left that we needed to apply for to try to, to try to get this clock fixed. So everybody, keep your fingers crossed. So we'd, we'd really like to get this, this clock back up downtown. Um, and then we also, just to backfill some of the landscaping and lighting and other amenities for those, the parking lots, the ready grant parking lots. We did apply for another 130,000 with the USDA. And this was the funding we applied for last year, weren't successful kind of as a technicality. Kind of looks like we might not be successful again as a technicality, but it, it, it's okay. I hope that counts. So next, um, I went on the Valley Pod for the first time by myself. I didn't have to have adult supervision and talked about all the projects we're doing with housing in downtown. So, um, and then also we had a nice visit from the Office of Economic Development and International Trade. They didn't give us a lot of warning, but really it was nice for them to see the amount of work that they've put into Malagros and they've put into Rainbow's End and that project that was just finished. Like the, those are those tax credits at work. And in our downtown quarter, restoring historic buildings is really important. And so a lot of my life has been, um, housing. So downtown was really fun and really exciting, but really it's all about housing. It's, we just, we're told so succinctly, I mean, housing really is the crisis in our community right now. So that's me and my team and our weekly meeting with CRHDC. That's their whole team of design professionals. Those are architects, those are professional planners. That's a big fancy firm called Kepphart in Denver. And just talking through every possible detail of this development so that we can get them through the PUD process. So the planned unit development process is up before council here in the near, very near future. And we really have exhausted every stormwater question, every landscape question, every housing type question, every intersection question. We've tortured Harry, we've tortured Ray, we've tortured the fire chief. Just, we just get people, hold them hostage and talk through every possible thing about the layout of this community. Um, and it's a beautiful development. It really is. We also contributed some design and cost estimate data working with the Public Works Department for the Airport Road Affordable Housing, which is the 20 units. 19 is, you know, very, very, very low income. And then one would be for an onsite manager, just, just by St. Benedict's and the property we own by the airport, uh, that the city manager applied for funding for. Um, and then we were working with Reynolds Engineering on the preliminary engineering for the Century Mobile Home Park. So either that will benefit the Century Mobile Home Park in the current round of funding that they're going through, or we will have the complete engineering and environmental reports we need to go after USDA funding. So it's all, it'll be all packaged up. My team applied for $6.2 million in February. And it was for Tierra's, well, it's the five, 400-plus units that CRHDC is building. And again, this, this development is just truly a labor of love at this point. We've just been meeting with them every month since November of, you know, 2021. And we just, we, we really, really believe in what we've created here. And they have just put tremendous amount of time and a tremendous amount of professional work into this design. And so being able to help apply for transformational affordable housing money, which is state money, just to do some of the infrastructure so this can be built and we can keep the cost points low. I mean, the whole thing is you're putting money in, into infrastructure. You have to raise the cost, the cost of the housing units. If we can keep those costs low, then we can get people in these houses and we can get people at the price points they need to in our community. We also, around the same time, um, CRHDC applied for a 9% Lytech credits, low-income housing tax credits, like the Iron Horse Project used. So a lot of the same, there was some cross-pollination between those two applications, but they're both extremely powerful, powerful applications and they're really, really valuable. They, they, they mean the difference between us breaking ground on this development this summer or not, basically. Oh, and then, thank you. I made Heather take a picture of me. She took a really good one. But, um, this is me presenting at the Colorado Municipal League Legislative Workshop. And this was last month and it was a real honor to be included with City of Fort Collins, Longmont, um, Town of Frazier and, you know, mayors and Mayor Protem and council people. And just talking about the amazing things we're doing in housing and just, you should have seen the faces. I mean, I, I really appreciate the things that Counselor Carson said a couple of meetings ago about my presentation for the city, but you, I wish you could have seen the faces of the city representatives in the audience before me being like, what are you doing in Alamosa? Like, how are you doing this? You're Alamosa. And I was like, yeah, we're doing this. Like, it's amazing. And I, I just can't, I can't give enough credit to council and I can't give enough credit to the city manager. And I just can't give enough credit to my team and Public Works. And we just have all come together as a community and decided that we're going to figure this housing thing out. And maybe we do have to invent the wheel because other communities bigger and much more well-funded than ours can't figure it out, but we will. And it is a really beautiful, amazing thing. So that's what I've been up to. Please keep me.
Okay. We'll turn it over to council for any questions or comments. Okay, um, Counselor Daniel.
Thank you, Mayor. Rachel, thank, I feel like when we had the discussion about this department and what we needed and how we were going to be able to do all the things that our city wanted to do, city manager really put together a great proposal about why it was needed. And personally for me, everything you and your team has done and accomplished and are bringing in and funding has exceeded the expectations that I had, that I had thought we could accomplish. And so I just, I really want to say, I appreciate all of the work and it is nice to have such a dedicated team and, you know, Beata wanting to put together a clock, like, and making sure that gets back up and that being a, a project with, especially with all of the other thing, things happening. It's just, you have a really special team and the, the work that Deacon and your entire team does. Like, we are very lucky to have you and I just want to say thank you. And I really love these quarterly updates because there's so many things that are happening that I think if we didn't know quarterly, you would have to give us a like 45-minute presentation every time you, you spoke.
Okay. Any other red lights before I wrap things up? Counselor Grego?
Yes, I, I was there in Denver when Rachel got up there and she still, she's, she took the program over. You know, and the way people were reacting and the questions and stuff. You know, I, I really want to thank one person that has put together a, a, a good team and they show time after time how they perform, you know? And that's our city manager. You know, she has the vision to, which I kind of argued a couple of times about different positions and stuff. But as you see it growing and you see it looming, it, it, great vision. And, and, and that's what it takes is a good team. And you mentioned it, you know, Public Works, it's all the people working together. Everybody's come together and they're seeing it all over the state. They're recognizing that you're putting Alamosa on the map and, and they're seeing that we're advancing. We're, we're homelessness, you know? Who would think that we would take on homelessness? And we've taken it on and done a great job. And it's, it's stuff like that, that she has put together the vision and, and everybody's playing ball together. And we're doing a great job. So, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Grego. Okay. I don't see any other lights on, so I'll just wrap things up. Rachel, um, it's, it's just amazing, all the work that you and your team do and, and how many people around the state talk about the, the wonderful things that's going on in our community. This is March and Heather and you, you and your team and your entire staff, and this is the truth. It hasn't been a month that hasn't gone by this year to where I haven't gotten a call from an elected official or a community leader or some other person who has something to do with housing development or downtown design or how homelessness that's going on, that hasn't reached out to see what is Alamosa doing. So what that means is that everybody across this entire state is hearing about the wonderful work that all of you are doing, like Counselor Giego commented on. And we just thank you all for all of the work that you're doing. Keep it up.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. So that brings us to the next item on the agenda is committee reports. Do we have any committee reports? Counselor Hensley?
So we had marketing board this last week. So it's one of the fun times because we gave $82,000 away in grants. So that was really nice and I am on that subcommittee. So that was a lot of fun. And so we approved that. Also, uh, we are moving forward with the RV parking. Uh, we're going to break ground. And so we got the permit from the city. So, uh,
From the state, from the state.
We didn't get, we had the CDOT one.
Yeah. Oh.
We're just doing it.
Okay. Go, go, go.
Well, so what it is, is it, that when you don't hear anything for a certain amount of days. So we've decided we're going forward. And so, uh, but we got all the other, um, things that are moving forward. And so with that, uh, it looks like it'll, it'll, like, they're looking at the ground and all that, but I don't even think there's that much permafrost and stuff. So we should be good. Also, uh, Jolene and I, we did our counselor coffee, what's it called? Counsel, coffee with the counselor? Yeah, coffee connections. So it was really, um, very, uh, it was, I thought it went well. We had a, nobody necessarily came in particular to CS, but what was really nice was as people came in, we greeted them. And so we had some people ask some questions, things like that. So it was, uh, enjoyable, had a good time and so that went well.
Okay. Thank you, Counselor Hensley. Okay. I don't see any other lights on for, um, committee reports. So we'll move on down to, uh, staff announcements.
Thank you, Mayor. I was really excited to be able to forward the announcement that Rachel and, and her team have successfully gotten the EPA to demolish the Walsh and that they want to move quickly. This could have been a three-quarter million dollar type of cost. So we are really, really excited that we don't have to try to piecemeal it with different grants or phase it or those types of things and that the EPA realized what a big deal this is. And so not only are they funding it, but they're doing the work. They are handling the project. So, um, one last thing from a, a project management perspective for us to have to tackle. And they want to move quickly. They do want to be done the end of May. You know, I don't want to jinx them or anything like that, but I'm excited to see that finally get taken care of. And I know a lot of our downtown businesses will be glad, as will our fire department, um, to have that be, be gone. Rachel's not the only superstar in the room. We've got, um, Ken Anderson, who was just shy of signing autographs last week at a conference. It was only at Montavista. But, um, we were, we were speakers at a, a conference for deflection and diversion. We would talk a lot about our lead program, the co-responder program. The chief was very authentic and, and to the point and, and had the information that the audience needed to hear. And after each time he spoke, there'd be like people coming up to him and giving them their cards and asking them questions and, and all of that. So, um, I just want to share that that was positive. We also had state and federal funders there. So I think it's always good when we can, um, show how successful that these programs are and, and what's going on from a community perspective. And then lastly, um, we are obviously well underway with the Victoria Avenue construction. I think the, the parents are adjusting to the drop-off and pickup. It's, it's taking a little bit, but I, I really want to thank staff for everything they've put into it from really two years ago of getting the stuff to the utilities to try to get the utilities moved out, to get the stormwater as much done in advance as possible. So we could shrink it down to five months, um, but that still obviously doesn't hit the summer. So that's why we, we started now and, you know, I, I agree with Harry's logic. It's easier to get parents who've been doing this for almost a year to make an adjustment than to do the beginning of the school year with new parents type of situation. So, um, we can't shrink it down for just the summer. We would have loved to. It would have saved us a lot of calls and headaches as well as everybody else. So, um, that's well underway. And, um, I'm sure we'll have some hiccups as any construction project does, but that is, that is moving forward. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Brooks. Okay. That brings, uh, bring us down to the next item on the agenda. It is liquor licensing authority action consent calendar B. Counselor Carson?
I move that we, um, I move that we approve consent calendar B. Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, please start voting.
Counselor Daniel?
Yes.
The motion carried unanimously.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Patel. And that brings us to the next item on the agenda, uh, council comments. Do we have anyone with council comments? Okay, uh, Counselor Cribs?
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome. And then Counselor Daniel?
I attended the luncheon today with the chamber, um, and was able to, um, happily represent the city as well as listen to Heather's presentation. And it was amazing. It was informative. And there, it didn't leave for a lot of questions at the end. And so I just wanted to, um, thank Heather for the detailed presentation that she gave and reminder that she did put herself out there at the very tail end saying that maybe she should be able to do this as a traveling show to, to let other groups know. It, it was really good. And thank you for taking the time to put that together and to bring it to an audience that was possibly hearing it for the very first time. So it was very informative. Thank you.
Thank you, uh, Counselor Cribs. Bring us to Counselor, uh, Daniel.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor. I, I did want to reiterate what Heather was talking about with the deflection and diversion conference. I was unable to attend and was very, very sad, but had several members of my team from work go. And I heard nothing but positive comments about the city manager and the police chief. And I have folks from our, we serve the La Junta region in Crowley County. And so we have folks come from here, that's where I'm at right now, from here go to the conference. And they were super impressed with the work and the, like, the coming together that we are able to do. But really, I, I saw several of them today and they were like, we really enjoyed the chief of police. We really enjoyed your city manager. It was neat to see what you were doing. They asked questions about the lead program. And so I'm just always so thankful for our team. And I know when someone has a question or someone has like a wonder about what is happening, I know I can them to the team. And I can say, hey, this is, this is what we do. And this is, this is the person to talk to who has, you know, good information or will point you in the right direction if they don't have the information. I never have a fear about that. The same is true with our library. It's true with our rec center. It's true with all of our services at the city. And it is really, I think it's really helpful and humbling to know that we have very little, I guess, council, we get to say yes to things when people come. So we have very little to do with that. And I just really appreciate that the team is so trustworthy and they are so thoughtful and able to do the work that they do. So just thank you, thank you, thank you. And yes, I think the team did a great job in the conference last week.
Okay, thank you, Councilor Daniel. Okay, I'll, I'll wrap things up. And we were talking about a team. We do have an amazing team. And Alamosa, an acronym for TEAM, T-E-A-M, stands for Together Everyone Achieves More. So my following comments, I, I have to really reach out to a few staff members, starting off with our city manager, Heather Brooks. I've, I've been around Heather several years and been on different panels or giving presentations with her. But today's presentation is by far been one of her best presentations that I've ever seen her present. Not only did I also comment that she should take this on the road, she also, also should give this presentation to council and possibly give it to the governor's office as well so that they can see how we do things here in Alamosa to move forward to address those homeless issues. It was professional, informative. She was extremely intelligent about the way she handled herself. It was well thought of. It was a PowerPoint presentation that pretty much covered all the aspects that we deal with as a small city when it comes with dealing with homelessness. So hopefully, we all get the opportunity as council to see her give that same presentation. I think it would be very helpful and beneficial. As you can see, Jim, with TSJC, who also was at the meeting, he was really touched with some of the slides that she had in her presentation that broke down the different type of employment or employee and opportunities in certain area of incomes in, in, in our community. Then I want to reach out to Chief, shout out to Chief Bill Stone, who thankfully I was able to go out and he was inviting me and his team invited me out to the auto extraction jaws of Life Training a few weeks ago that consisted of firefighters from the entire San Luis Valley area. You're talking about camaraderie, just talking with those firefighters from the different parts of the San Luis Valley, talking about how they haven't really had a chance to be a part of a training like this. It was so helpful to them and also gave them those experiences that they need for when they're facing some of those dire emergencies. But more in a controlled environment in that training. Chief Stone, thank you for that. And they, they were all appreciative. I didn't get a chance to talk to you much about that, but good job. Then we got our Hollywood Police Chief Anderson back there. You, you're doing a wonderful job. Keep it up. I, I, I like seeing it. This is a great progress that we're making. And then our parks, I mean, not parks and ricks, but our Public Works Director and, and Harry. Harry, I'm gonna tell you, I don't have any people come by my house or anything like that. But some people know where I live. And, and I had a gentleman, when I got home, he was waiting on me. And, but he was waiting on to give me some good news. He says, I see all of the work that you all are doing in our city with all the roads and street construction and things that are going on. Just wanted to let you know how much I thank you for what you're doing. So I want to thank you for, for the things that you're doing. And then I'll wrap things up with Andy over there because Andy, the pickleball clubs, that they're just, they're off the hook right now. They're just really thankful for all the opportunities that they have with the pickleball that's going on. So thank you so very much. And all of this wouldn't be possible if it wasn't for our IT team with Brandon and Jim because they keep us connected so that we can continue to, to operate smoothly. So thanks to all of our team and the team effort that you're doing. And of course, all of our council members up here for the support that you're doing to encourage them. All right, with that being said, I am going to wrap things up. And Ms. Martinez, I would be remiss to not talk about you and your team and your assistant who's helping out today. Ms. Patel, I really appreciate you and the work that you're doing as well. Okay? All right. Good deal. So now I believe we have our executive session. I'm gonna need a motion for us to go into an executive, executive session and also make note that no further discussions will be had after the executive session. Councilor Beal?
Mayor, before I read this, can we get a five-minute break before we go into this?
Yes.
Executive session pursuant, I move that we move into executive session pursuant to CRS Sections twenty-four, six, just four oh two, four B and four F L to receive legal advice from the city attorney concerning a potential tort claim by Nicholas Hepworth and discuss any associated personnel matters.
We have a motion? Second, any further discussion? Not, please start voting.
I, I have discussion, Mayor. I'm sorry.
Okay, I didn't see your hand. Go ahead.
That's okay. I'm wondering if this is a different Zoom link, if I'll get a different Zoom link.
Yes, it is a different Zoom link. And Holly said she'll send it to you right now.
Perfect. Thank you.
The motion carried unanimously.
Okay.